Good evening, and welcome everyone here tonight. Let's call the meeting order. In accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 3480-D, South Carolina Code 1987, as a medium, all the meetings in the meeting area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. Just how we have our prayer on this to go down.
That's my asking. Father, it is again that we come to meet to make decisions that are in the best interest of our children and our citizens of Darlington County. We ask for your guidance and your direction as you help us to conduct this meeting. We ask this in your name, amen.
Ms. Carter, raise your hands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, now entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
Would we approve it again then?
Second discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda?
Aye.
So, ayes have it. Moving on, consent items, adult education admissions.
I move to re-accept the recommendation for admission.
Second.
I'll say.
Second discussion. All in favor of that motion? Aye. So, ayes have it. Moving on, minutes, January 10th, 2022, regular meeting. And January 24th, 2022, board work session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to re-accept the recommend, I mean, the minutes of both meetings.
Second.
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor? Aye. So, ayes have it. Moving on, honors and awards and recognition. We have several here. Mrs. Carlina, you'll be doing these, All-State Course, All-State Band, and Beta Club. We'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. We'll start out with our All-State Course recognition. This year, we have three students who are being recognized for making the All-State Course here in South Carolina, and they are all students at Hartsfield High School. The three students that we're recognizing are Eric Huey, Liam Thompson, and Maddy Jackson. And the principal is Corey Lewis, and the director, the core director, is Laura Olson. So, that's our first recognition for the evening. Our second academic recognition is for All-State Bands. And this year, we had two students to make the All-State Bands, one in the level, which is a senior level, and the other is a middle school level. Our first student is from Hartsfield High School, where principal is Corey Lewis, and the band director is Cameron Watkins. And so, this student is Colby Channing Parrott. That student is at Hartsfield High School. Our second student to make the All-State Bands is Sophia Andreski, of Hartsfield Middle School, excuse me, where principal is Mr. Brian Hickman. And I believe they're also working with Mr. Cameron Watkins as well. And then, our last academic recognition for this evening is to the National Beta Club of the Carolinas. This year, we had one student who was recognized from Mayo High School for math, science, and technology, who won first place in the state woodworking competition. And that student is Jonathan Jordan. Dr. Arlene Wallace is our principal. Those students will all receive a trophy that will be sent to their home schools.
Now that they are here, let's all give them a round of applause. Congratulations to all of them. And you will make sure they get their award, right? Okay. All right, moving on. Mr. Johnson will handle this, Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas, North-South All-Star Volleyball, All-State Cross Country, and All-State Football.
Yes. Good evening, board members. It's always an honor to recognize our student athletes for their hard work and dedication for their particular sports. This year, we have about seven students that we're going to recognize. First, we have the 2021 Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas Football Selection, and that young man is Reggie Calistow from Hartsfield High School. Secondly, we have the 2021 South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports, selected to the North-South All-Star Volleyball Team, and that's Ciara Ganey, Hartsfield High School. Thirdly, we have the 2021 South Carolina Track and Cross Country Coaches Association has selected Caitlin Nutt, Hartsfield High School, to the All-State Cross Country Team. And finally, we have the 2021 South Carolina Football Coaches Association has named four or more high school football players to the All-State Football Team, and they are Jamee Dukes, Patrick Anderson, Ethan Hunt, and Gabriel McAllister. Trophies for each one of these students will be presented to their school. Let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, congratulations to all of them. Moving on, reports, administration presentations. The next regular Board of Education Work Session will be scheduled for February 28th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the Board Training Room. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March 14th, 2022, at 6:00 o'clock. Yeah, that's right. Okay, March 14th at 6:00 p.m. in the Board Training Room, March 14th, 2022. All right, quarterly reports, minority vendor reports, emergency procurement, sole source. Any questions on any of those? Okay, moving on. Budget reports and federal funds report. Anything, Mr. Renee? Any questions, anyone? All right. Action items, board meeting dates for 2022-23. You got a copy of that? entertaining motion to approve all that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of those dates? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So, ayes have it. Okay, moving on, superintendent's update.
Five E. Five E.
Oh, here we are. Going back to five E. Schools, facilities, study, and building program.
That'd be me.
That'd be you.
Yep. Chairman, members of the board.
And our audience that's out there on Facebook Live. So, we started this facility study back in 2012, and I think the board remembers this very large document that was presented. Outside Firm actually put this together, that looked at all of our facilities at that time, back in 2012, and made recommendations to the district administration at that time and the board about potential projects that would take place over at least a 10-year period, if not longer. And so, the, since it was originated in 2012, one of the things, after my first year here, the board and administration had a discussion about what is our facility's plan, because the board had already passed, had the bond referendum, the sales tax passed for the elementary schools, and we were in the process of designing. And so, the three elementary schools were completed, which were part of the original study that was done. So, again, commend the board for taking the action to have that happen and have those six schools condensed down into three brand-new facilities, which are wonderful, beautiful facilities, new facilities for our students and for our staff and for our taxpayers. But also, the next questions were, what do we do next? And so, again, 2012, 2019, we needed to update and make sure that we were still on track with what we were looking at, taking into account the three new elementary schools that had been built. And so, that information, of course, was updated in 2019. And then, of course, as we all know, in early 2020, life changed for all of us for the next two-plus years. So, the pandemic took a great deal of our time and a great deal of our energy, but as we all know, the numbers are coming down now, and we are once again coming out of the surge, our fourth surge that we've been through, and I think we have really figured out a way to work through this. So, now, it's time to start talking about other things besides COVID, and the building facility would be that next step. And so, I bring the board back to the 2019 revisions that were done, and looking at our facilities in general. The good thing about Darlington County is they've done a great job of taking care of their buildings. The unfortunate thing is that we have some really old buildings that no matter how much you try to take care of them, they cost a lot of money to maintain. And so, you get to a point where you can spend too much money on keeping old buildings up versus new construction, or certainly renovations that would help that. So, there are several other recommendations in here, but at our last work session, the board had asked for me to look at priorities based on the facility plan that we have and the building program that we've initiated, and to bring those priorities to the board for discussion, and of course, as we work through this process in general. The one thing I will note is that I've had lots of discussions with Ms. Douglas about our finances, and anything that we are discussing tonight about the facility plan, anything that we have a discussion about, we have the money to be able to do this. So, we do not, we will not be going to taxpayers for money for any of the projects that we are discussing tonight. And so, you know, that's a great position to be in. Again, the market's not the easiest market to be in right now, as far as
Year level and the other is the middle school level. Um, our first student is from Hartsville High School where principal is Corey Lewis and band director is Cameron Watkins. Um, and so this student is Colby Channing Harret. Um, that student is at Hartsville High School. Our second student to make the all-state band is Sophia Andreski. And um, of of Hartsville Middle School, excuse me, where the principal is Mr. Brian Hickman. And I believe they're also working with Mr. Cameron Watkins as well. Um, and then our last academic recognition for this evening is through the National Beta Club of um, the Carolinas. This year, we had one student who was recognized from Mayo High School um, for math, science, and technology, who won first place in the state woodworking competition. Um, and that student is Jonathan Jordan. Dr. Arlene Wallace is our principal. Those students will all receive a trophy that will be sent to their home schools.
Now they are here, let's all give them a round of applause. Congratulations to all of them. And you will make sure they get their award, right? Okay.
I agree with you.
Okay. All right, moving on, uh, Mr. Johnson will handle this Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas, North-South All-Star Volleyball, All-State Cross Country, and All-State Football.
Yes, good evening, board members. Um, it's always an honor to recognize our student athletes for their hard work and dedication, uh, for their particular sports. This year, we have about seven students that we're gonna recognize. First, we have the 2021 Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas Football Selection, and that young man is Reggie Calistow from Hartsville High School. Second, we have the 2021 South Carolina Coaches Association Association of Women's Sports, um, selected to the North-South All-Star Volleyball Team, and that's Sierra Ganey, Hartsville High School. Thirdly, we have the 2021 South Carolina Track and Cross Country Coaches Association has selected Caitlin Nutt, Hartsville High School, to the All-State Cross Country Team. And finally, we have the 2021 South Carolina Football Coaches Association has named four or more high school football players to the All-State Football Team. And they are Jamee Dukes, Patrick Anderson, Ethan Hunt, and Gabriel McAllister. Trophies for each one of these students will be presented to their school. Let's give them a round of applause.
Okay, congratulations to all of them. Moving on, the reports, uh, administration presentations. The next regular Board of Education Work Session will be scheduled for February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P M. in the Board Training Room. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six o'clock. Yeah, that's right. Okay, March fourteenth at six P M. in the Board Training Room, uh, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. All right, quarterly reports, uh, minority vendor reports, emergency procurement, sole source. Any questions on any of those? Okay, moving on. Budget reports and federal funds report. Anything, Mr. Renee? Any questions, anyone? Action items, board meeting dates for uh, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. You got a copy of that, and entertaining motion, approval on that.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on any of those dates? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, moving on, superintendent's update. Going back to five E. Schools, facility study and building program.
That'd be me.
That'd be you.
Yep. Chairman, members of the board.
And our audience that's out there on Facebook Live. So, we started this uh, facility study back in two thousand and twelve. Uh, and I, I, I think the board remembers this very large document that uh, was presented. Uh, outside, uh, firm actually put this together, uh, that looked at all of our facilities at that time, back in two thousand and twelve, and made recommendations uh, to the District Administration at that time and the board, um, about potential projects um, that would take place over at least a ten-year period, if not longer. And so, uh, the, since it was originated in two thousand and twelve, uh, one of the things, after my first year here, the, the board and administration had a discussion about, what is our facility's plan, because the board had already uh, passed, had the bond referendum, the sales tax passed for the elementary schools, and we were in the process of designing. Um, and so, uh, the three elementary schools were completed, which were, are part of the original study uh, that was done. So, um, again, commend the board for taking uh, the action to, to have that happen and have those six schools condensed down into three brand-new facilities, uh, which are wonderful, beautiful facilities, new facilities for our students and for our staff and for our taxpayers. But also, the next questions were, what do, what do we do next? And so, again, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and nineteen, we needed to update and make sure that we were still on track with uh, what we were looking at, uh, taking into account the three new elementary schools that had been built. And so, uh, that information, of course, was updated in, in two thousand and nineteen. And then, of course, as we all know, uh, in early two thousand and twenty, uh, life changed for all of us for the next two-plus years. So, um, the pandemic uh, took a great deal of our time and a great deal of our energy. Uh, but as we all know, the numbers are coming down now, and we are once again uh, coming out of the surge, um, our fourth surge that we've been through, uh, and I think we have felt, really felt, figured out a way to work through this. So now, it's time to start talking about other things besides COVID. Uh, and the, the building facility would be that next step. Um, and so, I, I bring the board back to the two thousand and nineteen uh, revisions that were done. And uh, in, in looking at our facilities in general, uh, the good thing about Darlington County is they've done a great job of taking care of their buildings. Um, the unfortunate thing is that we have some really old buildings that no matter how much you try to take care of them, um, they cost a lot of money to maintain. And so, uh, you, you get to a point where you can spend too much money on keeping old buildings up versus um, new construction, uh, or certainly renovations that would help that. So, there are, are several other recommendations in here, but um, at our last work session, um, the board had asked for me to um, look at priorities uh, based on the facility plan that we have and the building program that we've initiated, um, and to bring uh, those priorities to the board uh, for discussion. And uh, of, of course, as we work through thi- this process in general. The one thing I will note is that I've had lots of discussions um, with Ms. Douglas about our finances. Uh, and anything that we are discussing tonight about the facility plan, um, anything that we have a discussion about, uh, we have the money to be able to do this. So, we, we do not, uh, we will not be going to taxpayers for money for any of the projects that we are discussing tonight. Um, and so, you know, that, that's, that's a great position to be in. Again, the market's not the easiest market to be in right now as far as uh, pricing of things. So, so hopefully, whatever uh, the board um, takes action on down the road, that, that by the time we get to that point, that the uh, supply chain will, will settle down some. But anything we discuss tonight will be based on current pricing. So, it's factoring in uh, the market today versus, for example, what the market was when we built the, the three elementary schools that finished in two thousand and twenty. Yep.
So, when we contract with a contractor like we have in the past, it could be months out before we get to the point of building the whole infrastructure that we're on. Is, I just wanted to make us mindful that when we do this contract, this is so different than we've ever done before because of the, like, we hope it gets better.
But it will, but when we contract, we need to make sure we've got some kind of um,
Contingence.
Yeah. In the contract, the allowance for repricing at the time based on current pricing of that, if that makes sense?
Absolutely. Uh, you bring up a great point.
I just, I, I would like to think that this doesn't hold out forever. And as you say, it could be now in ten years, you start a project now, it might be eighteen months where we actually get the materials priced out, and they pay for them, they make a margin, this phenomenal, that's, we don't need to be stuck with that.
Is there any sort of a chance it could go in the opposite direction?
Um, always that chance, but I think there's a greater chance of the other. I mean, you ask yourself, how much worse can it, if it gets much worse, we don't be, we don't do anything, you can't afford it. I mean, it's outrageous, as we discussed earlier about the incremental increases in pricing.
I mean, I just, I'm afraid, I mean, I deal with supply chain issues every day. I'm afraid that they aren't gonna come back down. They're gonna stay.
Even when those things get better.
Right.
That is.
I mean, cause I mean, it's.
They're gonna enjoy the margin unless competition comes up and drives it down.
Well, the market price, the market always determines that, right? But I'm just saying, I don't, I don't expect to see our, our vendors, for example, say, okay, we're rolling back our prices now because things are better. I got a feeling that we, this is where we're gonna stay.
And so, since this is so new, we've never, never been in this situation. I'm just saying, have some language in the contract that allows us regardless of up or down and in-between, we need to keep a margin. The contractor got a margin, if that makes sense. And again, this is something we haven't been through, so I think we're gonna need some advice on how we can word this to make it fair to all concerned, but obviously, we're concerned about ourselves.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's so many uh, variables that play into the pricing right now and so many unknowns. I, I think if you talk to anybody, you, both of you have, are in this, you know, business right now, whether it be purchasing or whether it be in the banking industry, you all are facing this every day. Um, and you know what it's like trying to get something ordered and sent by a certain time for a certain price. Uh, so, you know, the good thing is, is that we have some knowledge on the board that, that is out there and understands this. But I, I think what it builds into, to any of these discussions that we know, the second we say we're gonna build something, it, it's usually two years down the road before it's finished. And um, you know, Jamie, I think to your point, that we have to, the wording in contracts is probably gonna look different than it's ever looked at in, in the past from a legal standpoint. Um, and then also, you know, put yourself in the contractor's shoes. You know, they, they, they're dealing with the unknowns, and so, they're committing to something. So, I, I think there has to be flexibility, because we have to make sure that we're, we're utilizing the taxpayers' money um, as, as frugal as possible, but getting the best product for it as well. And uh, so, I, we, we've talked with, you know, our contractor, we, we certainly don't expect them to do anything for free, but we also expect to get the absolute best price possible for what we're looking for, so.
It's a cross share, what I see a lot of people doing now, I've seen some large, large contracts, um, and they've really done something they've never done before. Uh, they're having meetings after meeting after meeting, trying to find a way to come up with a solution where it's fair to both parties, and they're coming about what they're calling partnerships. And they share, sharing the expense and they sharing the savings. Uh, but it's all transparent, I mean, they've gotta be, it's gotta be open. So, it's neat, I've watched a presentation being developed for a large, large corporation, and I've learned a lot with that, and that's why I bring that up. It's all new verbiages, it's all new, it's all new negotiating, so by the time we get to doing it, it won't be as new. But I'm just saying, it's a win-win for both sides. And I think they're realizing that, and but again, we got some kind of partnership where we, neither of us lose.
Yeah. So, so, so I'm hoping two years down the road, whatever transpires, that you all will be able to say that we're, that the market's much better. But I think the reality is, is that it, it could be where we are right now today, so. But yeah, great points from a, from a money standpoint, because that, that's the other part of this conversation is, is that we have to have enough money to do what we wanna do. And so, uh, i- if, you know, where we may have thought a contingency amount, a normal contingency amount may have been one percent, you know, a percentage that's normal at that time. It's very different now, uh, and, and, and guestimating what that contingency, which means how much can we allocate money-wise to that project? Last thing we wanna do is start on something and not have enough money to complete it, for example. So, um, a lot of things will go into this, um, but I, I think, you know, I, I think between the, the board's expertise and the district's expertise and those folks that we have worked with over the years, um, that have, you know, that have, have that uh, knowledge, you know, we're gonna do the best that we can, so. But uh, you know, in, in talking about those things, uh, and in talking about, okay, so there's this, you know, this big book with all these different suggestions and recommendations, where do we start? Um, and, and so, you know, I think before the pandemic, in two thousand and nineteen, actually, when we had this discussion about the, the updated facility study, you know, we, we started those discussions about what is the priority. Um, and, and of course, you know, when we talk about maintaining old buildings, um, they're, the biggest example we currently have of that um, is our St. John's Elementary School, which is over two hundred years old now. And so, you know, the, it's, it's a, it's a beautiful building that many people have many fond memories about. Um, but the reality is, it's a four-story um, challenged facility for students and for children. Um, and codes and ADA and, and everything else has changed so much over the years um, that anytime we have to do a minor repair, uh, it, it's very expensive because um, there's nothing easy in, in, in an older building like that. And so, um, you know, we, we, we saw that there were uh, recommendations for repairs and renovations, and it just gets to a point where it's more expensive to actually do renovations than it is to build. And so, you know, looking at that scenario, um, that, that, that from a, from a, you know, renovations versus build situation, so the, the, the St. John's School would start uh, that conversation. And so, when you start looking at, okay, well, well, St. John's, well, you know, wha- what are some of the other priorities that are in here? You know, we also have had discussions about um, our Rosenwall Elementary School attendance area and how um, our enrollment has continued to drop um, in, in, in Society Hill. Um, and that opportunities for those students, because the numbers continue to drop, that there's very limited opportunities uh, for the students that are, that are currently attending. For example, there's, there's twenty-seven uh, middle school students total, grades six through eight. There's a total of a hundred and eighteen students uh, in attendance in Rosenwall. So, um, you know, so, so those are two pieces that we need to look at potentially, uh, you know, uh, finding the best opportunity for those students. Uh, again, the Rosenwall Building is an older building. It, we did have some renovations done to it a while back, uh, but it is an older building as well. Um, if you, you know, if either one of these buildings we're talking about, if you walk down the corridors and you look at the ceilings and you look at the size of the corridors themselves and you compare them with, for example, J.L. Kane or Bay Road or Lamar Spaulding, our new schools that we've built, there's just no, you know, there's no comparison, e- especially as a child that's attending in that environment. So, you know, uh, from, from a priority standpoint, um, I, I think it would behoove us to continue those discussions um, that we initially started, uh, barely, barely. Uh, but, but my, you know, my focus and priority would be on a facility that took care of the St. John's students' needs as well as the Rosenwall Elementary middle needs. And as we have seen in our facilities, we've been able to combine schools and combine buildings um, and get the best benefit um, with the end product that we have. Just to give you an idea financially, um, what, what, what the impact is on, on our budget right now. Right now, operating uh, St. John's and Rosenwall separately as we, you know, as we have, um, it's approximately five point five million dollars a year to operate those two buildings separately, all cost, all operating costs for those two buildings. So, every year, we're spending about five point five million dollars. If you take a building uh, like Kane, uh, the new J.L. Kane that we built, um, which the enrollment would be very similar uh, to the combination of um, Rosenwall Elementary students plus the uh, St. John's Elementary students, the enrollment would be very similar to what um, the current J.L. Kane enrollment is. It's within about fifty students right now is what we're looking at. Right now, a year on that particular building, we spend about three point two million dollars a year, okay? So, so five point five million a year versus three point two million a year for the same amount of students. But the difference is a new, efficient facility um, versus two older facilities um, that are in separate buildings. So, that, that alone would generate over two million dollars in savings, plus it would be a new facility for the students um, and, and the adults that serve in that particular facility. So, um, now.
How many students, I'm sorry, how many students do you say, are, how many total?
So, right now, we're looking at about five seventy-five. Um, and, you know, so, so again, about fifty to sixty more students is the combined Rosenwall-St. John's enrollment right now, so. And, and, and so, you can see that, that, that keeping up older buildings and, and separate buildings um, i- i- is, is expensive. Now, um, so, so we always talk about we're, we're students first and we're focused on students first in, in the environment the students are in. And so, I, I will always say that I have to stay focused on that. But I can't ignore the fact that there's gonna be some adult uh, concerns about uh, not being in the buildings that have been around for a long time. I've heard over and over about so many people that have graduated from St. John's uh, over the years. High School, that was the high school for a long time in the Darlington area. Um, and, and so, there's a lot of, there's a lot of memories there, there's a lot of fond memories there. And in Rosenwall, you know, the Rosenwall School, um, again, very uh, very deep rooted adult, um, you know, people are very proud of where they attended school, um, and they're, and they're, um, so it's difficult for the adults that went to those schools and are no longer there. Um, but again, I have to be focused on the kids that are currently there. Um, and what's best, I think, for the kids that are currently there is to put them in the best environment possible with as many opportunities. So, but, but for the, the adults that, that may be concerned about, so what happens? Um, we certainly would wanna start having some conversations with our communities. Uh, for example, the, the Society Hill Rosenhall, Rosenwall Community as well as the St. John's uh, community, um, and start having some uh, input uh, from what possibly could happen with these facilities. I know that the board is committed to um, having our facilities benefit the communities uh, if it all, you know, in, in any way possible. Uh, and, and so, I know that's one of these first pieces is, um, you know, discussions about what could happen to those facilities in those communities. Uh, what are the possibilities? Um, and so, that would be part of this ongoing process of not only talking about building a new school for the students, but also, you know, what does that look like for the communities with the buildings once the students move out of them? And so, there's, you know, this is the first of many conversations. Uh, and, and, and it's the first of many opportunities to, to, to decide, you know, how that could look, you know? At, at, at the end of the day, um, the school district is not in the development business. We, we don't, we don't buy property and put a bunch of money into it and turn it into something. Um, but we certainly have the ability to talk to people that do that um, and that could help come up with some ideas and some guidance on, on some, some things that would help our community. So, I, I, I think the uh, I think the public would like to, to know that we're, you know, looking at that. And again, we'd be glad to take input from our public on what some of those possible opportunities may be. So, um, that, that's the first priority, uh, and the first recommendation. I, I'll kinda let it sit out there and, and take any board member comments. Um, i- if there are any comments or questions or, or, you know, for, for, for the conversation.
Question, you want?
Is, is enrollment stable at Rosenwall, or are we continuing to see a decline over time?
I, I will say that it's been continuing to, to decline. We're, we're currently at a hundred and eighteen students between um, K through, four K through is a hundred and eighteen students. Um, and I think I mentioned there's twenty-seven students that are, those are um, middle school students.
How many of those classes are combined, are multi-grade?
There's, there's not a multi-grade classes.
So, we're, so, so we're doing two and three students in a class with one teacher, or five students, I mean, in our, at our.
Eight, yeah, eight students, the middle school especially, those are the smallest, you know, because you have to have content teachers for that. But even in some of the elementary classes, we had um, eight to ten students.
And are the, are the middle school kids there, are they able to participate in, in any kind of extra, like, I mean, like football? I mean, are, are there any extracurriculars that these middle school, school students are currently able to participate in?
So, from a. Athletic standpoint, they have a basket, they do have a basketball team, so there, there is a, a boys' and girls' basketball team. Um, but again, you can imagine that this, for example, Darlington Middle School or Hartsville Middle School, they have, you know, a thousand students upwards to choose their, you know, fifteen players that play on the basketball team, whereas uh, Rosenwall has twenty-seven students to choose their fifteen players. And, and that's, you know, boys' team is fifteen, girls' team is fifteen. So clearly, you don't have enough players to, to, to practice against each other the way you need to and to field those teams, so.
Where do they play their game?
Any, any other sports, they have to play um, elsewhere. So, uh, Darlington uh, Middle School for football, um, you know, any of the other athletic opportunities would be through Darlington Middle School at this point in time. Um, their games, uh, Mr. Johnson, they play their home games.
At Mayo.
Yeah.
Mayo.
So, they're already a community.
So, they, they had to go from Rosenwall, I mean, Society Hill to Mayo to play a basketball team?
A home game, yeah.
A home game.
And you're, you're fielding a team out of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders for a middle school team. You could be playing most likely a team that's got all eighth graders starting, and you may have three sixth graders, yeah, wow.
And you're only putting that with something like, not even six, sixth game?
Sixth game. So, you only got, you don't have twenty-seven kids, you got whatever.
You probably.
And you don't have that many because half of them are, you know, maybe the boys and girls. You're fielding for the, the boys' team, you don't even have that many to choose from because you can't pick from the girls.
So, no baseball, no football, or nothing unless you're trying to go to school anyway.
So, we, so if, if we combine or did something with Rosenwall and take ours together, where would those middle school students go?
Darlington Middle School. Any, any other questions about that first topic? You know, again, lots of questions and, and fewer answers right now because we're just starting the conversation. So, you know, I know big questions for the adults is what happens to the buildings when we build a new school that are there now? And we'll, we need to have those conversations, we need to start working on possibilities. And, and have some two-way communication with our, our communities about that. Then the other question is, you know, where, where's the new school going to go, where are we going to build a new school? And so, you know, again, lots of questions, not as many answers right now. But, you know, I, I, I think you, you certainly wouldn't go to the other side of Darlington City proper. You would certainly go to the side, you would start looking at the side that Rosenwall, that side of the county property versus the opposite side. So, and, and anything in between. So again, lots of questions, not as many answers today, but as we work through this process. You know, we certainly can, can start to tackle those. And so, you know, is based on pricing today that we're looking at? You know, potential pricing for an elementary school that, that's going to handle the size of combining both St. John's and Rosenwall Elementary Schools together. You know, in today's twenty twenty-two pricing market, which is pretty high right now, you're probably looking at about thirty million dollars. You know, if you look back at, at, we paid approximately twenty-two million dollars for our, our, when the dust settled with everything, twenty-two million dollars per school for our, the three elementary schools. That was twenty twenty pricing and those schools are a little smaller. So this school would be a little bit larger and of course, of course, current pricing, these are very rough estimates. But, you know, talking with, with construction folks and, and, and those folks that are in the business right now, probably looking at somewhere around thirty million dollars for that facility.
But we could use some of the same plans we have used previously, right?
Absolutely. So, so any design that we have used in the past would certainly be a possibility. That would have some savings to it, you know, as well to look at. So I, I think that's, anything's on the table, you know? It, it, we, we could look at designs that we've recently done. We can, you know, there's just a lot of opportunities there.
So would, I mean, would that, how would that benefit us? If, I mean, if we can, are you suggesting because they would be similar in size that we could go with one of the brand new elementary schools that we just built?
Yes. So from a design standpoint, there, there are, I'll give you this, a lot of, a lot of districts have what they call prototype designs. Where they'll have, you know, large districts that build many schools over and over. They'll have prototype designs and they'll just scale them to the size that they need. So whether they're building a school for five hundred students or a thousand students, you know, there's a prototype design. And you build out the core to, to handle, you know, the difference. So that is a possibility that we could explore.
I mean, does that help us from a not recreating the wheel, so we save some money kind of perspective?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, from, from the, the sheer work that goes into, you know, design. It's not like, it's not like you don't have to do anything. It's certainly, you still have to do a lot of work, but it's not from scratch. And then of course, from a building standpoint, the more you do something over and over similar, the better you get at it and the better you understand it too. So I think, you know, whether it be from a knowledge standpoint or, or the actual design or the construction. If we do something that we've done something similar in the past, I think there's a lot of benefit to that.
Well, so I mean, I wasn't here at the beginning of the process, obviously, for those elementary schools. What kind of timeline is that? I mean, what, how long does it take from us saying conceptually, we want to go do something to kids in a building?
So the experience that the, the district has had, I think when I walked in the door, you were in the midst of the design process. You hadn't, you hadn't put it up to bid yet for, for pricing. But it, it's about a two-year process from the time you say, let's, you know, start now. And, and it just depends on, I mean, there's, there's variables, you know? You, you can look at eighteen months for construction, but it just depends on weather. It depends on, you know, can you get the, the supplies that you need? And the, and, you know, we were talking about supply chain issues that we're seeing right now. So, you know, you, you can build a school in eighteen months. But, you know, two years is, is probably a conservative time of looking at. Especially if we were able to use a, a similar design that we currently have, we're probably looking at about two years.
And even if you saved from the design standpoint, because we've done it, you're probably going to make it back up.
True.
Yeah, which is still the same number.
But it's better than being that much further above.
So, you know, again, I, I think from a, from a funding standpoint, from a time standpoint. From the ability to, to put this in motion, we're, we're in a good place, we are in a good place. You know, not, not having to worry about what, how we run our schools every three months like we've been doing the past two years. You know, that, that would help a lot to, to be able to be a little bit more stable with how things are going for many reasons. Whether it be the market or whether it be what we're in the midst of. But I feel like we're going to be in a better space moving forward. And I think everybody is focused on that this is the new normal. And that we have to figure out how to, to move forward instead of being in protect mode all the time. Because otherwise, we're going to look up ten years from now and be in the same place we are today. So I, I just think that it, it's, it's a good opportunity now. We've got things in place. One of the things that, 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 you know, we've been able to do during the pandemic is be frugal with our finances. And so we are in a place where we could, we could build a school today and not have to ask taxpayers for money for that. The, so again, it, it all depends on how much money we have. But as we talk about, you know, projects that are, that are listed in this document, and of course, this document is on our website. So anybody in the public is able to access this document to be able to say what the recommendations are. And remember, they're just recommendations. So that, they're, they're not set in stone as we are going to absolutely do this. This is something that the board, you know, has to take information in and then make a decision. And so there, there are likely some things, some projects in this facility plan that the board says, yes, we agree, we want to do that. And there's some things in here that the board may say, no, we don't agree with that, we don't want to do that.
So we made the decision to build a new school, does that, I mean, are there still other improvements that we can afford?
Yes, there are. Well, I, I should say it depends. We do have more money that potentially accessible, that we could do some renovations, for example. We wouldn't be able to build more than one new school.
Right. All the recommendations in that report are not, they're going to new school, right?
That's right, that's right. And, and so, you know, for example, we could take on some of the other renovations that are in there that are, that are recommendations. And so one of those recommendations, for example, when we talk about older buildings that are becoming costly. And that we are going to at some point in time, you know, get, get backed into having to do something with is our South Side Early Childhood Center in, in Hartsfield. And so currently that houses four K and five K students. And, and so, you know, there, we're going to have to do something at some point because of that facility and the shape that it's in. And the needs for that facility. And so, you know, one of the, the, there's a recommendations in the facility study to potentially move those four K and five K students out to their home schools in the Hartsfield area. And so, you know, versus having one building that houses just four K and five K students. So, you know, for, for me, I, I am a proponent of students being in the same building throughout their education in school. And, and I, I think there's a lot of pluses to having students four K through fifth grade in their buildings. And, and so if, if you look at current trends that are, that are out there in education right now. That there's, there's really not a whole lot of new four K and five K facilities that are being built out there. Not saying that there's not any, there, there are some in large, large districts, especially in, in potentially larger cities. But it's, it's, you know, there's, there's different circumstances for that. Versus if you look at districts similar to ours in the southeast. You know, the majority of those districts are building schools four K through fifth grade for elementary school. So I think that, you know, that would be something that we would want to consider. And that, you know, again, the board would have to, to decide if that was one of those items that they felt, you know, we, we needed to look at. Another facility renovation option is, you know, Pate Elementary School that we currently have was, which is our, our four K through second grade school here in the Darlington community. But the facility is extremely difficult. Again, they, people have done a great job of keeping the buildings up. This is, this is not a indictment against the way the buildings have been kept up. Darlington County has probably done as good if not better job than most people in the state on keeping their buildings up. But it gets to a point where systems have to be replaced. And again, just the sheer size, I mean, Pate's classrooms are seven hundred square feet, you know? A new classroom today is nine hundred square feet. So you, you look at the difference size has to do with kid's space, lighting. I mean, when, when you walk through some of our older buildings, there's no light, there's no natural light. It's, it's, you know, fluorescent or LED light. So just those things alone, but, but clearly the systems and the cost of the system. So, you know, so, so what do you do about, you know, the K-two situation with Pate? Well, you know, one of the recommendations in the facility study is to, to combine or to add on to Brockington Elementary School, a wing to be able to accommodate the Pate students. And so, so Brockington right now is grades three through five. So, you know, Pate's grades four K through two. So you could actually combine those facilities for a K through fifth grade, four K through fifth grade enrollment. And so, you know, again, Brockington is a newer facility for the school district. And, and so you've got some life out of that building. And so adding on versus building new for those and, 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 and having neither one of those facilities. Adding on makes more sense financially at this point in time, another possibility. So, you know, it, it's, it's, it's really going to boil down to the, the, the priorities that the board has. And again, you, you've kind of heard from administration about what we see as those priorities. And then based on market conditions at that time, what do we have the money to be able to do? So let me give you an example on some numbers. I, I would, again, these are very rough estimates, but I, I would say the four K, five K situation in Hartsfield would probably be about nine million dollars today in costs. And that's based.
Involved in their home school?
Yeah.
Where, where's all that caught, what's involved in that?
So you would have to add classrooms on at each one of the elementary schools that are currently in the Hartsfield community. So, so that would be adding on, like for, for some of the smaller schools, I'll give you an example. I believe Carolina would add a four K and two five K classrooms. But then again, in Carolina's situation, you, you're limited on what you can add anyway. So you, to, to add that, you, you got to add some other spaces. It's not as simple as just blocking a classroom on in some of these buildings. So some of them, it's as easy as blocking on classroom, right? So like our, our, our three new facilities we have, they were built in a way that we could easily add classrooms on to our new buildings because they were designed that way. But our older buildings, it's a little trickier. You know, when you look at Thornwell, for example, Thornwell's got space currently that they could add students in. So you're not really looking at any construction to add students there. North Hartsfield, you would have to add on space. They wrote, because we added the Montessori program, we would probably look at having to add some space. So, you know, and it's, it's a guesstimate, it, it's, you know, these are purely very general projections. And then I think if you look at the, the Pate-Brockington situation. That's, you're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of about six million, six and a half million dollars based on today's projections. And that, that would be to build a wing and all of the pieces that would, you know, be part of that wing. Like bathrooms and hallways and everything else in order to combine those two facilities. So again, rough estimates and depending on market conditions and what that looks like. So, and today, if, if we said, okay, well, let's do all three of them, we, we couldn't do that today. We don't have that type of money. But we certainly could have that money over a few years' time. Because again, our, our eight percent monies, for example, that we get every year. Instead of putting money into repairs, we would use some of that money to put into renovations and building. So, so we would have capacity over the, the next few years to have money added to be able to, to work through this based on market conditions. So again, I, I threw out two other potential priorities there. And I want to give you all a chance to comment, ask questions, anything else.
So the first thing that, that I'm gathering from listening to you is that your first priority would be the Rosenwall-St. John's situation because of, A, the age of the buildings, the situation that we are in as far as that goes. And then as far as Rosenwall itself goes, the opportunities that our students have there versus what they would have at a larger facility or a more combined mode.
Correct.
So, and then that in, in turn could potentially save us two and a half million dollars a year, which we could then take that two and a half million dollars to help fund some of these other projects.
That's exactly correct.
Would there be any loss of jobs or anything like that or would we retain their work?
We, there would not be. And so just like with the three elementary schools that we built, when we condensed six schools down to three, nobody lost their job. There were, there were no jobs that were lost in that scenario. So, yeah, that, that's, that's usually the first question that, that the people that work in the buildings ask. And the answer to that is, you're, you're essentially, you're going to need the adults to accommodate for the amount of students that you're dealing with. And every year, we have needs from an employment standpoint too. So every year, there is turnover. So, you know, there, there, there would, there would not be an issue with people and their jobs.
And obviously transportation, not going to be an issue either. I mean, getting them from, kids from Society Hill to closer this way.
And so, so in theory, in terms of this overall review of our capital plan, I would imagine that what we would look at next would be kind of this in writing to consider coupled with a funding mechanism and a timing of those funds that we're naked provide with what we have initially, then how we do our eight percent, and then how we can do some savings, et cetera, kind of project. Knowing that everything's timed, that we got five years, seven years, at least, good, but, you know, the money will fall in line. We can actually go ahead and start the planning of all of them. And then map out the years in which we want to complete those.
It sounds like we're talking the Society Hill, St. John's, followed by maybe a, a four K, five K. Just sim, doing away, limiting, taking them back to homeschooling, then coming over to Pate.
Right, consolidation.
Consolidation with the major runs. Now, I want to make sure that we do save those monies, some of those monies for the ongoing regular upkeep. We got in trouble years ago that weren't.
Regular upkeep. We got in trouble years ago that we weren't doing with all the existing facilities. Make sure we don't. Eliminate that fund that one and I keep talking about, um, that we kind of used for that. As the bigger we get, our newer we get, we'll have as much, but you still have that strong need, and we're always short of that.
Absolutely. So, you know, the good, again, uh, the the board has done a great job over the years. Of managing their finances, that especially over the past, you know, I'm gonna say five to seven years. Um, and how we have funded not only the the new schools. So, you know, let me give you a little good news about how. Um, that funding i- is going, that um, the original monies that were the one percent. Sales tax for Darlington that was, of course, voted on uh back when when the when the program was initiated for the three elementary schools. Um, you know, that that was supposed to take up to fifteen years to pay off. Um, and, you know, based on current conditions. And again, that could change, but. But based off current conditions, it looks like that potentially could be paid off in five years from now. Um, so significantly less time than what we thought. And there there's two things that are are helping that. Um, you know, property uh has risen, the the prices of property is has risen with the reassessment and everything that they've done. Um, and then, you know, there's more business being generated right now. Uh, I think a lot of people thought during the pandemic that. That there was business being lost, but but it really shifted. So it 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 shifted to different types of businesses, but those businesses have been very successful. Um, and so we've been able to generate more quickly. That is paying off those bonds, that can potentially pay those bonds off a lot earlier. Um, and so 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 that's, you know, that's put us in a good position down the road too, because what we're talking about here. We currently have funding for, and we need to generate a little bit of funding for it. But down the road, that gives us some other opportunities too, uh, for our other facilities. Um, and then as far as the part about ha- making sure that we have enough to kind of take care of those. I mean, that's what eight percent money is supposed to be for, is to take care of, uh, maintain the facilities that we have. Um, you know, we we've been fortunate again because of the the property uh increase from assessment. Uh, we've not, we've not had to raise taxes at all. That, I mean, that this district has left our eight percent middleage where it is. Um, and and it's steady where it is, but it continues to generate more for us because of the value of property. And also the value of businesses in our in our county. So, yes, um, we we should be able to continue. To have that same amount of money that we've had in the past geared towards specific repairs. Um, big repairs and 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 small minor renovations. Uh, but it also is generating some extra money that goes towards what we're talking about now.
The point of the pandemic, what's? What if we do nothing?
Well, um, I can tell you if we do nothing, at some point in time, we'll get to a point where we have to start shutting down parts of schools. Um, because we we, you you, there's only so much duct tape you can put on them. And, um, you know, my my fear also is, is that uh from a safety and security standpoint, some of our older facilities. Um, you know, it that tha- tha- that's always a concern. I think that that we've had, that I've had. Is safety and security. And so when you have really old buildings, um, that are not able to continually be updated. Because there's just only so much you can do to them. Now now you're having to get into a situation where you may have to shut down parts of a school because you can't do enough to them to keep them up to code. Um, and and worse yet, you you certainly don't want to see anybody get injured or hurt, um, because of the the lack of being able to keep a building updated. Um, and so, yeah, and and like we talked about with Rosenwald and and St. John's, we're. You know, you you we're right today, we could say, well, it's it's not, there's not really, they're both operating, so we're okay, but I think. Just by that earlier conversation, you know, we're losing about two million dollars a year by keeping those two older facilities open. Um, that we could have.
You have questions, anyone? Just remember, public out there, we are not talking about any tax increases at all. Using money we have accumulated over the last year, few years. It's huge and far down for certain.
And and the federal funds have helped.
And the federal fund, right.
Yes.
We've deferred some of the things we would have purchased.
ESSR money, so to speak.
Yep, and and ESSR will play a component in what we're talking about as well. So. That's part of that funding stream. It's not just monies that we currently have. Or that will generate through eight percent, but it's also some of the ESSR three funds that we have. That we're allowed to utilize for certain, um, certain requirements. Okay, so, uh, you know.
So what 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 are you asking of us right now? I guess I wanna know what my go do is.
So I I think the biggest thing is to to be able to restart the conversations. Because we, for two years now, we've not really been able to talk a lot about anything other than just surviving. And so now, um, it's time to start having some other conversations and. Um, I think we're all very proud of the three elementary schools that we have. And how they are beneficial for students. And so I I think, you know, we we need to start those conversations. Because we know that's gonna help our students. So so today, it's just about having the conversations. Um, it's getting input from your constituents, um, and and uh hearing from our communities. Um, and then the next steps is that that we need to bring the funding mechanism to you. Um, and and dial a little bit more in on um, timing, for example. You know, what what's it gonna take to build a new school and and how much money is, you know, do we have that money and where's that money coming from? And show that to the board. And then I think the board needs to make a decision on. Either going forward with that project or going forward with a different project.
So, I mean, and it hasn't been a while since I've looked at this um study. Are there other options in here besides the three that you talked about that are, that rise to your, I mean. To the top of your list, or that kind of catch your eye, or do, or if, you know, you weren't a part of one of those schools that was mentioned.
Yep.
Then probably the recommendations in here are gonna come later, or?
The, yes.
Okay, so these are your top three recommendations from this report?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, you know, looking at what what I know that we deal with on a daily basis of of maintaining the buildings that we have. Um, and the challenges that we've had. Um, and, you know, looking at the enrollment situations. Um, eh, these are the three that that from, again, the 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 daily business of running the schools. That rise to the highest level.
But this doesn't mean that for some, the other schools in our district that maybe have projects on that capital project list.
They'll still get.
That need to have done, those aren't gonna suffer.
No.
So it's just these specific recommendations in this study that don't rise to the level concerned for you or. Importance.
Yes.
When it comes to, in comparison to those three.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, there there's, there's so many more conversations we can have about other facilities. And down the road, like I I think we should always be looking ten to twenty years down the road. Um, and people say, well, that's a long time down the road. Well, i- i- if you don't start planning now for the funding mechanisms. You won't, you won't get there.
Well, and that's why I was asking you about, you know, what it is that you want us to go do, so I'm thinking, okay, it's February, you know, we don't. You know, it takes a while for us to, you know, put all this together and make a decision, and and you're saying this is like a two-year process. I would hate for us to miss the opportunity for the beginning of a school year.
Yep.
You know, with that two.
Absolutely.
Like, so when we start is important because two years later.
We need to open.
Yeah, we need to be able to.
And preferably at the start of the school.
And we don't want it to be in November, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we'll we'll pull some more information, bring it back to the next board meeting, and we'll have next steps to move forward.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we already done the action items, so we'll move on to uh superintendent's update, if you're still up there.
So, uh, it wouldn't be a board meeting without talking about COVID. Um, so. We'll kind of get back to what we've been used to talking about for a little while, but it's a much better conversation today than what it was several weeks ago. Uh, and certainly three weeks ago. So, um, you know, i- it, our co- COVID numbers are dropping. Continuing to drop quickly. Um, and so, just just giving you an example today. Um, you know, our state numbers in South Carolina were one thousand five hundred ninety-three. That's fifteen hundred ninety-three. There were nine cases in Darlington County. Um, three and a half weeks ago, we had twenty-eight thousand cases in this state on one day. So at its peak, it was twenty-eight thousand, and now we're down to about fifteen ninety-three. Our positivity rate today was nine point one percent. We were well above thirty percent uh when we were dealing in the midst of the surge. So. Numbers coming significantly down. Today in the district, it's Mondays are usually higher days because you pick up over the weekend. We had one employee that was positive. Um, we actually had four close contacts. But because they were either A, um, eh, they had, they were vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Or they had recently had COVID, we didn't lose any of those people. So all four of those close contacts. Were fine to stay in the buildings because of vaccinations or having COVID. Um, ironically with our students. We had six positive cases that were reported, again, you know, normally Monday's the heavy day. Uh, we actually had twelve quarantines, but four of those quarantines. Uh, were exempt because of vaccinations and having COVID. So we're starting to see the effect of. Both vaccinations and lots of people that were exposed to the virus. Um, but the numbers are continuing to come down. And, um, you know, we 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 expect it, we expect that to continue each day. Um, and that's why we are really planning on being above this last surge. Um, and and moving into better times uh i- in many ways. Uh, so. One of the things I did wanna talk about briefly is that the, um, one thing that's been in the news a lot. Uh, and a lot of districts have been talking about is the test to stay program. Um, which has to do with uh allowing students that have been, uh, that are exposed and adults, that if you're in close contact. Um, and not fully vaccinated or not had COVID in the past ninety days, that you could still stay in the school. Um, and then on, but, you know, on day five, that you test between, you you gotta have a posi- uh, you gotta have a negative test between days five and day seven. And so we are putting together a a plan uh to be able to do the test to stay. Uh, I have talked to our testing vendor, uh, who does the PCR testing, um, and we are. Uh, we'd like to start by uh having PCR tests utilized for this versus the antigen uh home tests. Um, our PCR tests are being turned around in less than twenty-four hours. Um, and we feel like if we can test a a student on day five, they'll have their test the next day. We'll know whether they're positive or negative, they stay in school, uh, we can keep moving forward. Um, we we'd like, we 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 like the reliability of the PCR test, and as long as we can do it timely. Um, and there's no cost to our parents or to our employees, uh, we would prefer to do that. Um, again, we'll we'll start with that, and we will make adjustments if if, you know, as we get information from starting that way. So, um, you know, I think it gives the opportunity for more students to be in school during very large quarantine time periods. And I think if we can get it right now, and we can kind of get the bugs worked out of it now, that 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 will help us move forward. Again, we have some some expertise on the board, with Ms. Hasler working with DHEC and and her nursing role too, that she's. Kind of plugged into what's going on out there. We've had some discussions about it, and uh Dr. Dawson as well. So. Um, you know, I I think anything we can do to keep as many of our students with us. Eh, e- even though the numbers are really low right now, we just need to get this worked out. So. Uh, I'd like to say that we won't have to deal with this again, but I think if history tells us anything the past two years. Um, in about four or five months, we're probably gonna have to deal with something, and we just don't know if it's gonna be significant or not. Um, but I, we'd like to have everything in place by then, so we can react much better to keep our students in school. So. We're looking at the test to stay program and trying to get that up and running uh as quickly as we can. Uh, again, there's a messaging piece, we gotta get that out to our parents. Uh, we've gotta get that out to our teachers and schools and principals and nurses. Uh, we've had, you know, preliminary conversations about this internally. Uh, but there is a whole messaging piece that we wanna make sure when we say we're doing this and we're starting now, that it's done with fidelity. And then the, um, last thing I will say about, um, you know, our our current COVID situation is, is that. Um, a- a- as we see the numbers drop as quickly as they are, and we know history tells us that we've got many good months coming up in front of us now. Um, we we need to open up. Um, our schools need to open up. I I met with cabinets this past week. I met with our minister pastor cabinet, our business community cabinet, and our teachers of the year cabinet. And all of us are in agreement, we need to open up. We need to to allow, um, our schools to be more open. Uh, to volunteers and visitors. Uh, we need to open our cafeterias up. And have our s- our kids be able to eat in the cafeterias. Um, we, you know, we need to allow field trips. Um, so my message, uh, starting this week is, let's start planning on doing this, let's do this. We we need to. We need be, still need to be careful. We still, we can't act as if COVID is gone. But I think we know how to deal with COVID at this point in time as we move away from the surge. Um, and so I I think what we've also learned. Is that that we thought we needed to keep as many people away from us because we were afraid of getting the virus from them. But when all of a sudden we hard, had hardly anybody in our buildings, we probably could have used some more people. And, um, so, uh, you know, it's, you you learn as you go through this process and. Um, but the good thing is, our 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 ministers and pastors and churches, they're they're ready, they're ready to roll in. Our business community, they're ready to roll in. They're saying, when can we start? What can we do? How can we help? And our teachers of the year group said, we welcome the help. We welcome having people, um, that can help us help our children. So. Um, again, we'll be having those discussions this week, um, and we will continue to message this out as we. Open up these different areas in our buildings. So, yes.
Just to speak to that, it's something I would really like for us to see, like, to go back and do, which I think we. Did not get to celebrate as a community, the opening of our three schools. Um, I would want for us to be able to go back, have a ribbon hanging, have an open house for our community. Um, I mean, eh, you know, this all happened right in the midst of this, and I think if we are now looking. Forward of working our way out of this, you know, that we, this is something we is celebrating. And I think we need to show our community these wonderful facilities that were built.
You definitely do that.
I I mean, I I would love to see us have, you know, Sunday afternoon, open houses or something, we could.
So.
Sooner than later, right?
Senator Wally brought up a great point. We've been waiting two years. Um, the 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 amazing thing about what happened is, we we actually opened on time three elementary schools in the middle of the pandemic. And there are timelines. Not only that, they're beautiful schools that nobody's had a chance to see other than the students and the staff that works in them. So, yeah.
I I haven't even been through them completely. So, I I think.
I think as soon as possible, that we can get that rolling, uh, we need to get that message out to you all and to our communities and let them know. But yes, I will say, in this meeting today, we are gonna get some dates scheduled up to open houses to get our. Our board and our community into our buildings to see what what what's, what those new buildings are like. And what to look forward to in the information we were just talking about. So.
I mean, I think we just, you know, for the for the community to also see what these, what a new facility looks like, what opportunities present themselves. From an educational standpoint.
Um, and then the last thing I wanna mention is that we have our February break, which is new for our district. Um, I think it probably couldn't come at a better time, considering what everybody has gone through in January. Um, that we have a three-day break in February. And so our school, our buildings will be closed, our schools will be closed. And so, our school, our buildings will be closed, our schools will be closed February twenty-first through the twenty-third. So, schools will be closed, district offices will be open. But I'm very, very encouraged for our folks to get some, you know, a, a weekend and three extra days to recharge and kind of catch their breath. And then, you know, this, this used to be, I was talking with the teacher of your group, and, you know, they called it the gauntlet between January and spring break. And there's usually no break. Well, now we have a break. And again, considering what everybody's been through over the past thirty days, it, it's coming at a great time, so we look forward to that. And that's everything I have for the superintendent's update.
Any other questions, superintendent, anyone? Thanks, sir. Good report. Okay, we'll go, move on to board member input. Ms. Kelly.
Well, I would like to congratulate Mr. Johnson for his recognition by the South Carolina Athletic Administrator Association. I don't want to read it, make sure I got it right. But his citation of excellence for the support of all of our athletics, middle school and high school. You know, I'm a big athletics person. I'm an academic person, too, but I'm a real big athletics person. Congratulations on that, and thank you for your support.
Okay, that's cute.
Nothing to knock.
Dr. Dawson?
Half about.
Jane?
No.
Go ahead.
Well, I also echo the same thing, though, what you just said. I hope all you have at the rest of the evening, happy Valentine. I hope that the students and the parents will have an opportunity, as well as our employees, to enjoy this break. I had also written down that they had the break coming Friday through next Wednesday. My granddaughter's already reminded me of that, so I hope that you all will enjoy it.
Richard?
I'd just like to say congratulations to all of the honor award recipients that we had tonight. It's just amazing to see all these students and parents and teachers and coaches get all these different awards. It makes me proud of the county that I serve, Darlington County. Happy Valentine's to everyone, and congratulations, Mr. Johnson, on a great job.
I started up there.
All right, we have started rocking on, and we've got a lot on the table. We have a lot of work to do, but we will get it done, for sure. Thanks to all of our award winners also, we appreciate y'all. And hopefully, in the near future, you'll be back at the board meeting receiving these awards and not doing it virtually.
Next board meeting.
Next board meeting. Okay. Mr. Chuck, how we doing?
Eighteen.
Wow. Eighteen, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Current year.
Current year.
Current, current year, yes. We're already offering contracts for next year.
Are we getting contracts in pretty much? We're going on.
Yes, sir, our intent forms came back with a ninety-six point six percent return rate, so that's a good indicator for where we are going into contract season.
Okay, very good, very good. All right, good deal. Yeah, want to thank everyone again for all you do. Hope you all have a happy Valentine's Day and enjoy your break. Y'all deserve it. Jane, you get a, you get a four-day break?
Yeah.
But we do appreciate what all your teach, our teachers and administrators, lecturing workers, bus riders, everyone, y'all make this happen. Really make our job easy. Now, we're here, we go out there in the trenches, and you, y'all do the work. We can't say thank you enough for what you do. It's a tough job. I get it all the time, I think I dump on my daughter, the teacher, and I know what y'all, you know, you know what you go through.
And to our nurses who are hopefully starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, I think so. I feel good about where we are now. And I feel good where our administration kept us in school, where we didn't shut down like a lot of places did. We kind of stayed the course, and I think it paid off. I think in the long run, our, our test scores will start improving. We'll, we'll be back, might take a little time, but we'll get back where we need to be. So, thank you so much again. Okay, we'll move on. Personnel actions.
I'd move that we accept the recommendation of personnel, and if there's an addendum as well.
Second.
Motion to accept personnel.
Second.
Second, discussion on that. I would favor the motion. Pose, I have it. The executive session.
There's no need for it.
Might be a first.
Don't linger.
No executive session. Okay, we'll move on. Dr. Dawson?
I believe we adjourn.
I want to favor the motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God, it might be a record.
Thank you, y'all have a nice time, kind of time, once I watch that coming.